Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. Carmella Vitale has absently excused a little under the weather. Please rise for pledge of allegiance and remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing. This is a moment of silence for not a Madison resident but a father of a very important part of the Madison family, and that is the father of Father George of St. Vincent's, George Hunt Senior, passed away on Friday, May 5th. So please, let's have him in mind, Father George, his stepmom, sister, brother, and his whole family and the St. Vincent Parish in our prayers and thoughts. Moment of silence. A motion for the executive minutes of April 24th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a motion for the regular minutes of April 12th, 2017.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion of the regular minutes of April 24th, 2017.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome all, on a chilly May evening. And it was a little chilly on Saturday morning, but it did not dampen the spirit of the hundreds of volunteers that poured into Madison through our annual May Day cleanup. The town looks great, a lot of hard work is done by many, and I want to especially thank Lisa Ellis for her effort in coordinating everything. It is not easy getting everything where they, everyone where they need to be, making sure we have the mulch that needs to be there, and the shirts, and all. So thanks to all the organizers, sponsors, and volunteers. Also part of our tradition on May Days, celebrating Arbor Day, and this year, we celebrated the 32nd consecutive year of Madison being Tree City, USA. And I happen, now I can wear a cap and be very proud of the fact that Madison is recognized as Tree City, and this comes from the hard work of our shade tree management board and our friends at the Shade Tree to plant all the trees and maintain everything out there. It was, there was a very good lesson that day, on the ratio of a small tree to large trees, what, 287 to 1, something incredible that if we don't-
No, 187 to-
187, okay, yep. 187 to 1 of the large tree, you have to plant 187 of the size trees that we do on a regular basis, so we need to take care of all our trees and protect our environment, so they do a tremendous job. Going on right now at Strikes is Rose City Roll, the PBA sponsoring a fundraising fundraiser to support Todd Love, to buy him a new wheelchair. And if you have not met Todd Love or have not heard his story, your homework assignment is to Google that name, and you will read quite an inspirational story. He was a speaker at Veterans Day recognition at the high school back in November, lost both legs and an arm in Afghanistan, and he was very clear, he's often been asked the question, would you do it again, and he said, absolutely, absolutely, I would put my life on the line for this country. And he's still able to, he now can ski and other things that he had been able to do before. So I said, Google the name and look up, read about him. He's a Madison resident now, attending Drew University, and the PBA is having a great time, and I've heard over 300 guests are there at the event. And a reminder, two weeks from tonight, the sole discussion item on our agenda is the Madison Downtown revitalization study, Urbanomics will be presenting, we'll also have the DDC here, and so that will start a little after 8:00 on the 22nd. And tomorrow, a few of us are heading up to the county Arboretum, where Sandy Philo will be recognized for her volunteer effort on behalf of Madison seniors. She has always dedicated time, but in particular, her nutritional support that she provided for seniors over the years is the reason she's recognized. Employees for the month of May, and these names are fairly familiar, because when things get tough, they step up and get the job done. Sandy Emrick and Linda Sawyer, outstanding work providing a smooth transition to new payroll system. And I'm sure all the employees appreciate that, because they still got paid as we transferred over. And anniversary for month of May, David Argyle, our electric department, 25th anniversary, so if you see him out there, please congratulate him. Anniversary's on the 11th. And now I'm going to come down and do a couple of proclamations. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and on the week which falls as Police Week. Whereas the members of the Madison Police Department play an essential role in preserving the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Madison, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of the Madison Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Madison Police Department is a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, proclaim May 14th to the 20th, 2017 National Police Week in the Borough of Madison, and publicly salute the service of the law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. And for those that have some time off tomorrow morning, it's 10:00, when Bike Unity Bike Tour will come through Madison on their way to Washington, so please head to downtown to support our officers and those in communities across the state and country. Sergeant, thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words?
I'd honestly be prepared to say thank you. We appreciate all the support. It's been a tough year for law enforcement in general, so we appreciate all the support we give to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. Oh, look, there's another proclamation here. We surprise Liz every year, except for the years when she's not here. Like last year, she surprised us by going to a conference. So, May 7th to May 13th, Municipal Clerks Week, and here is our municipal clerk, Liz Osborne. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of neutrality and partiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it's most appropriate that we recognize accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk, notably Elizabeth Osborne, Patty Macilso, and Mary Vacarello, sorry. And now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby recognize the week of May 7th through May 13th as the Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend our appreciation to our municipal clerk, Elizabeth Osborne, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you for all you do, Liz.
Thank you. It's an honor to serve the residents and officials of Madison. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
She was surprised by this.
Flowers.
We'll get reports from committees, we'll get Public Works shortly. Public Safety, Mr. Landrigan.
Okay, from the Madison Police Department, the Madison Police received $9,652 for their 2016 forfeiture fund disbursement from the Morris County Prosecutor's Office. Forfeiture funds have recently been utilized to purchase a child ID program and associated hardware, as well as new rifles for the emergency services unit. During the past week, the Madison Police received three LoJack stolen car tracking units. These devices will aid officers with tracking stolen vehicles that are equipped with the system. These units were installed at no cost to Madison Borough. On Tuesday, May 9th, the Police Unity Tour will be coming through Madison Borough around 9:45 a.m. The riders will be pedaling their way to Washington, DC in honor of those officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Lieutenant Joe Longo and Patrolman Carmen DeCaro will be participating in the Police Unity Tour, while Patrolman Anthony McCarron will be riding with Law Enforcement United. And from the Madison Fire Department, on Monday, April 24th, the Fire Department attended the Recruitment Day at Madison High School in preparation for the high school's upcoming annual Day of Service, which is Friday, May 19th. On Thursday, April 27th, at approximately 4:00 p.m., the Fire Department responded to a motor vehicle accident with injuries on Route 24. On Saturday, April 29th, the Fire Department participated in the Healthy Kids Program at the Madison YMCA. And on Wednesday, May 3rd, at approximately 5:30 p.m., the Fire Department, along with the Madison Ambulance Corps, Madison Police Department, and medics responded to two car motor vehicle accidents at the intersection of King's Road and Madison Avenue. The Fire Department had to extricate two patients who were stuck in one of the vehicles, which was overturned and lying on its roof. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And a quick note on, I think it's been mentioned before, but I did get a chance to take for a test drive, the new power assist bike that the Police Department has, this was, came through the generosity of the Main Street Foundation, which is a fundraising wing of the DDC, but it really takes community policing to the next level, and I've never pedaled up Maple Avenue so fast, a little power assist. I'm thinking I might need one myself. Finance and Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Clerk's Office, May 16th is late night voter registration for the June primary. It's the last day to register to be able to vote in the June primary, so the Clerk's Office will be open until 8:00 p.m. And the primary is Tuesday, June 6th. And then from Finance Department, there are a number of capital ordinances scheduled for hearing tonight. All of these projects were discussed and covered during the budget review and review of the Borough's five-year capital plan. From the Utility Billing Department, the electric utility dividend announced by council earlier in the year has started. All electric customers will receive a credit on their bill this month, which we did, and the next 11 months. A flyer is being placed in every bill this month announcing the program, and there is a webpage on RoseNet called Understanding Your Residential Electric Bill that customers can visit if they are interested in further details. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. We have for some time been talking about the implementation and deployment of automated meters, and I'm pleased to say the time has come. The administration has been working with the meter readers, the IT staff, the utility billing department, and the electric and water field staff on the implementation of handheld devices and the deployment of new automated meters. Test meters have been approved, and the first batch of new meters is expected to arrive in Madison within the month. The training staff from the supplier will be on-site the third week of June, working with staff in implementing the new system. We have high hopes for this. It should change the way that we use power and water in this town. It obviously will take some time, but it's another important step in making our utilities much more of a business-oriented, a business-oriented operations. From the Water Department, it's been the usual busy two weeks. They had 206 requests for locating and marking underground utilities. They had two curb boxes checked, they had 11 meter installations, they had 80 markouts. It's really quite remarkable how much work they do. They had 80 markouts for borough trees in addition to the 206 requests from one call. They also installed a new drinking water fountain with ADA access, water bottle refiller, and a dog-friendly drinking station at the Rose Garden Park, which I'm sure will be appreciated by many. Thank you.
Thank you. Health and DPW Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
So I do not have a health report tonight, but I do have the DPW Engineering Report. So we'll start with engineering. Buildings, enterprise network resolution contracting, continued site remediation at the rear of Hartley Dodge. Please use the front entrance to avoid any construction. Under roads, Savelli and Son Contracting continues work on the 2017 road improvements projects. The engineering webpage has updates on the streets that are under construction. Revacs will initiate work on water main replacement at Gibbons Place this week, and PSENG continues work on Fairwood and has initiated work on Lathrow. For sanitary sewers, the Rapid Pump and Meter Company attended a pre-construction meeting on February 22nd, but has requested a contractual time extension due to a submittal timing. An extension's been given to September 29th, but we've emphasized the need for progress once the new pumps and motors are received from the manufacturer. Parks, the memorial skating rink and field was resurfaced last week by Caruso Landscaping and will be maintained this summer to promote a healthy natural sports turf surface. Please stay off the field surface to allow the best conditions for the initial growth of grass. Quotes are being requested for a skating rink support building on behalf of the Parks Committee. This building will provide storage for various parks and recreation activities. And finally, the lacrosse club has requested a rebound wall adjoining one of the synthetic turf fields at the rec complex. This project has been designed, and the Borough is in the process of getting quotes for the construction work. From the Building Construction Department, just some quick stats, as of the end of the month of April, building permits are up by 3%. Inspections performed are up by 12% year-to-date, but the fees constructed, fees collected are up by over 300%. We're running almost half a million dollars ahead of where we did last year. And finally, from the DPW, skipping all the business-as-usual stuff, a couple of things of note, we please ask residents to take your water bottles with you or put them in the recycling cans. Every day, we pick up a large volume of water bottles at all fields. Next, they are out planting shade trees. They're about halfway completed, hope to finish up in the next month or so. And finally, a couple of things, most winter potholes have been repaired. If you see a pothole, please go to RoseNet and report it. And finally, they're still working on the paving list and raising manholes in anticipation of the reconstruction work. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Ms. Byrne.
Sorry, just lost my report. Here goes. I'm from the Madison Senior Center. A follow-up on senior transportation, as of May 4th, 136 people have registered with Rides for Seniors, and 58 are Madison residents, and the highest registration by age group is the 81-plus cohort. We have a lot of long-lived people here who like to travel at night. Our satisfaction survey is currently being conducted with registered participants, while publicity efforts include news media and visits to community events and local organizations. NJTV is taping interviews with seniors about the program for broadcast. Friends of the Madison Senior Center Board members, Don Webster and Darrell Murphy, are presenting a program of old favorites called Music and Memories on Wednesday, May 10th, at 2:00. Tunes from the movies, Broadway, and the '30s, '40s, and '50s are paired with Name That Tune questions and music trivia for an entertaining afternoon. I'm from the DDC and the Madison Chamber of Commerce. Again, as Mayor Conley mentioned, May 1st, although a little overcast, the rains held off, and we were very successful in cleaning up downtown. This Thursday is Ladies Night Out Shopping. Registration begins at 5:30 at Short Stories, lots of prizes, and businesses will be open until 8:00, so you can take advantage of that. And then something that we all look forward to, the farmer's market will be opening June 1st. And last but not least, vendor applications have been sent out for Bottle Hill Day, so we are busily anticipating the next large-scale community event.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
And now we're on to the first of two invitations for discussion. Remember, this one is limited to any agenda discussions, which tonight there are none, so the only comment on this session is any of the resolutions that are listed. Ordinances will have a hearing, so if you're going to comment on a resolution, please step to lectern, state your name, your address, and then keep your comments to three minutes or less. I will give you a three-minute warning, a one-minute warning at three minutes, and give you a grace period to four, if anyone has any resolutions to comment on. Does anyone have any resolutions to comment on? Please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. We are on to, as just mentioned, the agenda discussions, so ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for a hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meetings of the council held on Wednesday, April 12th, and Monday, April 24th, 2017. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
Thank you. We will be doing three hearings tonight. All the capital funding ordinances will have a single hearing, and we will hold those for last, and so I will call up the ordinance for a second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title, and we'll start with ordinance 15-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 190 of the Borough Code entitled Water to change the billing method for residential water meters.
Open hearing for ordinance 15. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 15-2017.
I second it. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 15-2017 adopted and finally passed. I ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Call up ordinance 17-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison naming Street Meadow Court.
I open hearing for ordinance 17. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 17-2017.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 17-2017 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. I will list these ordinance in brief title right now, and as we call them up for vote, we will have the full title read by the clerk. But the hearing, we'll be opening the hearing for ordinance 16, which is appropriating $110,000 in general capital for canopy fueling area and tank monitoring at Public Works Facility. Ordinance 18, appropriating $75,000 in general capital for architectural services for the roof at the Madison Public Library. Ordinance 19, appropriating $30,000 from electric capital for pad mount transformer at Bewell. Ordinance 20, appropriating $35,000 from general capital for purchase of integrated SCBA thermal imaging cameras. Ordinance 21, appropriating $20,000 from general capital for replacement of emergency backup generator at Midwood Water Tank. Ordinance 22, appropriating $18,000 from general capital for purchase of fire hose and fittings. Ordinance 23, appropriating $18,000 from general capital for purchase and installation of snow roof guards at Public Safety Complex. Ordinance 24, appropriating $15,000 from general capital for the purchase of rescue stabilization struts. Ordinance 25, appropriating $12,000 in general capital for purchase of low-pressure airbags. Ordinance 26, appropriating $12,000 from general capital for purchase of four new sets of firefighter turnout gear. Ordinance 27, appropriating $8,000 from general capital for purchase of portable trash pumps. I open the hearing for those capital ordinances, 16 and 18 through 27. Anyone wishing to comment on all the ordinances or any particular one, please step forward, state your name, your address, and which ordinance you're addressing. Anyone wishing to comment? I see none, I close the hearing. Please read the title of ordinance 16-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $110,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for Canopy, Fueling Area, Tank Monitoring, and Tank Maintenance Improvements at the Public Works Facility.
Mayor, I move ordinance 16-2017.
I second that.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 16-2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. 18.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $75,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for Architectural Services for replacement of the roof at the Madison Public Library.
Mayor, I move ordinance 18-2017.
I second that motion.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 18-2017 adopted and finally passed. I ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 19.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a pad mount transformer for the Bewell Water Pumping Station.
Mayor, I move ordinance 19-2017.
I second it. Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 19-2017 adopted and finally passed. I ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 20-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $35,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of integrated scuba thermal imaging cameras.
Mayor, I move ordinance 20-2017.
I second that.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 20-2017 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 21-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $20,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for replacement of emergency backup generator at the Midwood Water Tank.
Mayor, I move ordinance 21-2017.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 21-2017 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 22-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $18,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a fire hose and fittings.
Mayor, I move ordinance 22-2017.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 22-2017 adopted and finally passed. I ask the clerk to publish notice of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 23-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $18,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase and installation of snow roof guards at the Public Safety Complex.
Mayor, I move ordinance 23-2017.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 23-2017 adopted and finally passed. I ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 24-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $15,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of rescue stabilization struts.
Mayor, I move ordinance 24-2017.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey? Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 24-2017 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 25-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $12,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of low-pressure airbags.
Mayor, I move ordinance 25-2017.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 25-2017 adopted and finally passed. I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 26-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $12,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of four new sets of firefighter turnout gear.
Mayor, I move ordinance 26-2017.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 26-2017 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 27-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $8,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of portable trash pumps.
Mayor, I move ordinance 27-2017.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 27-2017 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice of the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Thank you all. And we are now on to the second of invitations for discussion. This is when you may comment on anything. Again, please state your name, your address. Keep your comments to three minutes, but I will give you a one-minute grace period. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Sam, welcome back.
Good to be back. Just a few days at the... Oh, yeah. Just a couple of things I want to talk about, if I may, Mayor.
You're out of practice. You didn't state your name.
Oh, San Sashell Park Avenue.
All right.
A while. I've been born and raised in Madison, and I lived on Park Avenue all my life. And years ago, I used to be almost pulled out of my driveway without even looking. I mean, it was not that much traffic, but it is unbelievable today. I mean, sometimes I got to wait five minutes to get out of my driveway. And Bob, you can vouch for Park Avenue is terrible. From Park got all the tax money, we got all the traffic. But something has to be done, especially with all this stuff being built, the King's Road, that humongous building. They're putting up buildings up next to the hotel there, another hotels going up, Elm Street. They're doing a big job there, up at the Dodger State. The only thing I could say, I mean, we can't change what's going on, is that, have we ever talked about getting onto the highway off Park Avenue somewhere? Like, years ago, they talked about they were going to do an exit going onto 287 from Deerford Road or something. Is there anything discussion about somehow eliminating some of this traffic? Because even the side streets are getting jammed. I mean, people taking shortcuts down. People can't pull out of the side streets. It's bad. Is there any discussion about tying it to the highway?
Yeah, I can give you an update on that if you have... I'll let you ask if you have any other questions or...
Well, no, a couple more suggestions.
Okay, go ahead, and so I don't take...
The other thing I'd like to discuss is, you know, I talked to a lot of people in town, being sort of semi-retired, and hanging around the barber shop every day, and CJ's and all, you know, you get all the information. The only thing is, the parking is, it was bad when I had the business years ago, but it's even worse now, the parking situation, especially for these restaurants. They're the only ones that are drawing these people into town. Like, local people know the little cubbies, but people that don't know where to park, but are we talking about some maybe helping the parking situation? Especially, like I said, all these buildings being built and all that? Is there some way we can maybe help with the parking or thinking about a double-decker or something? I mean, we gotta, we gotta do something. The parking is bad. And my third thing is, I haven't been here in a while, but I think it was like two years ago or more, maybe, we talked about fixing this beautiful building. Mrs. Dodge, she'd be sick if she saw what's, like, the front entrance way where all the rust is coming through the stone, the granite. It's terrible. It's going to get worse. You're not going to get that rust out. All the corking around the joints are all coming on. It's been like that for years. It should be, there's a couple of stones that are a little high, somebody's going to trip. And also, oh, the brass stores, you know. Let's be proud of this building here. There are my three suggestions, Bobby.
Thank you.
You don't mind them suggestions, do you?
Nope. I always hope for suggestions. You always have good ones, Sam. So let me, let me address the Route 24 connector and Park Avenue. Yeah, certainly, for those of us that have been in this area a long time, Park Avenue, I don't want to make myself sound old, but I remember I used to be able to drive from Madison to Cedar Knolls, and there were no traffic lights along Park Avenue when I first got my driver's license. And now you don't need traffic lights because the traffic's not moving anywhere. It's the state, we have been working with the state. I convened a meeting last year with our local mayors and elected officials, our freeholders, Rodney Freelandheisen and Representative from Department of Transportation. This was prior to the Transportation Trust Fund being refunded, but they recognize that the Columbia Turnpike Park Avenue is a failed intersection, one of the worst in the counties, if not one of the worst in the states, and a new connector. They're really not looking at a new connector lining up a Danforth or anything, but a new connector for the Columbia Turnpike. So you'd be able to come off the Columbia 24 and have a direct connection to Park Avenue East without having to fly across the three lanes of traffic. And also, if you want to get onto 24 East, you'd be able to connect without having to go up to Columbia Turnpike. So that is, the engineering's going to be done by the state, and then they'll put that in the funding stream. So that would take care of that.
So I understand. In other words, I heard about the one going over Columbia coming in, but is there any way we're going to get onto?
Right now, there's, between Chatham and Columbia Turnpike, there is no, no...
Maybe we in Madison should sort of spearhead this thing. I mean, it's bad, Bobby.
Yeah, we've got, I want to avoid the back of it, but yeah, well, it's been, they're looking at the whole stretch. I know from, I think the number that was thrown out was, Route 24 was designed for 20,000 cars a day, and it's getting 70,000 cars a day between Chatham and Morristown. Parking in town, come back in two weeks and hear the presentation. That'll start the conversation as we look at downtown parking. One of the things that's going on is you look at what's going on in the old Green Village Road School. That is called smart planning. Those are people that live in town that won't be getting their car to go downtown because they already have their, they're already downtown. They'll be walking there. And then Hartley Dodge, we're working with partners with funding. The Plaza needs a lot of work, and yes, we're still hoping to finish off the east wing to take care of that. So all those are in the hopper.
You're right on things, Bobby.
All right. Thank you, Sam. Good to have you back. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Tom. Oh, yes. Back to talk about our favorite topic, the welcoming committee resolution. First of all, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Cody, I'd like to thank you for your correspondence back to me over the past week, week and a half. Obviously, this is a topic that I'm very concerned about, but I do appreciate the communication that we're getting on this topic and, you know, the openness that you have with me. So I do appreciate that. I am going to refrain from any discussions on legal issues today. You've mentioned the meeting you're looking to set up, so I'll keep any of those comments to that and be looking forward to attending whenever that's, whenever that's set up. I am going to, though, just mention, I am planning to forward to you all another email with an attachment probably some point tomorrow. It is a proposal of a revised welcoming committee resolution. It's drafted off of the Leonia, Borough of Leonia, a welcoming committee resolution. I believe I shared a copy with you after last meeting, Mr. Mayor. It is, I believe it provides a more balanced perspective, and I think it addresses both, I think, the, the needs or the, addresses the feelings of the council and what you all wanted to do from your perspective and why you wanted to adopt this resolution. But I think it also addresses the concerns of those within the town, many like myself who I think are concerned about the statement. It is, what it basically says, plain and simple, is it's very apolitical. It definitely, it definitely will make a statement that Madison is a welcoming community. It will put, place no burden on, no additional burdens on the Madison Police Department, no additional burdens or, no burdens on any of the borough employees. It will, in no, in no, in no form will it state that Madison will not be cooperating with the federal government. And it's, I think, more short and sweet, and I believe when the federal government ultimately comes out with their defined definition of what a sanctuary city is, I believe it is one that will ultimately not put us in a situation where we will get designated as a sanctuary city. There's a number of other towns in Madison nearby that have adopted resolutions that I've looked at and read, and they, they clearly will have bigger issues based on what is specifically in those resolutions, more similar to the existing Madison one, which I believe would get us designated as a sanctuary city once we get to that point. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. I'm going to share this with you, and, you know, feel free to communicate with me. But as, even as somebody who, if I was in your position and somebody handed this to me, I would, I wouldn't vote for that either. At least, I understand where you're coming from, and as, as a citizen and resident of this town, I would feel a lot more comfortable with this. And I think if this was what was adopted and not what is currently there, I think we probably could put this matter to bed, in my mind. But anyway, thank you for your time and...
Thank you, Tom. And I'll be, we're forming up the details on the date of this, and this is a meeting for those that have concerns about the resolution to have, working with the date with our attorney, so he'll be there to answer any concerns. Anyone interested in attending the meeting can send me an email at mayor@rosenet.org. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And we have no introduction ordinances, so will the clerk please read the statement related to consent resolutions?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
So we removed...
Can we remove 152?
152.
And can we remove 154? Remove...
Want to tap 154 in separate discussion?
Yep. Okay.
Mayor, I'll move Resolution 145 through 151, 153, and then 155 through 157.
Second. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes, with the exception of 151.
Okay. Ms. Bailey?
Yes, to all.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion for Resolution 154?
So, I'm...
Yep.
I'm moved.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Now I can talk?
Yes.
So this is a resolution to purchase a new vehicle for the town's use. And my question upon seeing the specification of this vehicle was why the borough wasn't entertaining hybrid vehicles. So I asked Ray Cody to look into it for me. And we can purchase Ford C-Max Hybrid, which I can personally attest to as being a very good car. It's an SUV. It is approximately $4,000 more expensive than the vehicle originally under consideration, but I believe we have sufficient money to handle that increase. And it would, it would be a step towards encouraging others to be sustainable. I have found that I have increased savings on gas from the hybrid. I get close to 40 miles per gallon with the car, which could also pit, which could also offset the additional cost.
Ray, any background?
No, we're, we're up to the governing body's decision. We have $30,000 in the light item, so we can buy the higher-priced vehicle with the hybrid, and we're comfortable with that as a demonstration. We don't have many hybrids, so we're open to it.
And then Pat?
After speaking to Maureen about this offline, I did a little bit of research. The cars are somewhat comparable in size. The hybrid is a touch smaller. The mileage is significantly better. It's for city driving, which I think is the appropriate standard, given it'll be used primarily in town. The C-Max gets something on the order of 42 miles per gallon, whereas the Escape gets 23. The issue on visibility side and making a statement, I'm 100% in favor. I think if we look at these hybrids from an economic perspective, you have to own them a very long time to break even. I have no idea how many miles the borough typically puts on a vehicle before it trades it or whatever it does with them. But I, I know from personal experience, although your mileage is obviously much better, you're, you're making a statement as much as you are saving money. So it's, but having said that, I certainly will vote in favor of, of buying the hybrid.
Pat?
Oh, yeah, I guess, we do maintain our own vehicles, correct?
Yes.
Do, is our maintenance staff able to take care of a hybrid vehicle? And is there any additional cost to start to do that with a, if we're going to...
We get, we get the new car warranty for three years, or 36,000 miles.
Okay.
And then we don't envision having to buy additional equipment to serve as a hybrid And then we don't envision having to buy additional equipment to service a hybrid versus the traditional.
Same.
Okay. Well, because we typically keep these cars for a much longer period than the three years.
Oh, yeah. No, we rotate them, and we share them with other departments, yes. I'm going to say eight to ten years.
Okay.
If I may, I mean, again, from personal experience, there's a gas engine and there's an electric engine. The gas engine is like any gas engine, although typically a lot smaller. The electric engine generally comes with a multi-year warranty, I believe on the order of seven to ten is not unusual.
Okay, as long as we're covered, yeah. Because that'll be a new piece of equipment for us to take care of.
So is it the pleasure of the council to amend the resolution, or do we need to come back with a...
Well, one question, did we, do we have to deal with, this is not an ordinance, this is just a resolution, right?
Resolution and co-op purchase, so it's...
Okay. And with, it's within the budgeted amount we have?
Yes, we have thirty thousand dollars in the light item for vehicles.
Okay.
And it was either twenty thousand approximately or twenty-four. So the hybrid's twenty-four.
Okay.
So it's a four thousand dollar increase.
All right. I guess the one thing I would ask is, could we track the miles just to make sure we get the advertised forty-plus?
Certainly would be good to get, you know, if we're going to spend the extra money, it'd be good to get a report back.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to use this as a sort of a test case.
But it's, very rarely do our vehicles get to do highway miles, and so the hybrid